But those of you who haven't been here before, it is our practice to take the appeals in the order, in the numbered order as a rule. And then we ask the client to give any additional testimony he cares to give under oath, since this is a judicial hearing. I should say, under oath or affirmation, that way I'm being totally woke. And after we hear the appeals, we will then close the public portion of the meeting and talk among ourselves and decide whether or not to grant or deny the appeal. That said, let's go to appeal number 1061. Cody Nelson has submitted proof and he was denied. A building permit for a garage that sits between his house and the road. Is there someone here? Do you, sir? Would you care to enlighten us as to what's going on? I need... Okay, oh, and if you do it up there, I'd appreciate it, because that way you can... Okay. And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Go right ahead.
Twenty nineteen, I applied for a building permit. And then, this was under, I don't remember what his name was, but he was here for the building inspector for years. Prior to this whole thing getting switched around like four times. When I came in, I asked everything I needed. They issued me everything I needed. I filled it all out, got a building permit, put a foundation in. Then they changed the head of the building inspector there and the whole department.
Yeah, the zoning administrator, yeah.
Yeah, got a thing in the mail saying my building permit was revoked. I have four email chains going back and forth, just to get that back together. Then did everything that was asked that time. They've switched again, new building inspector, and now I'm here.
Okay. Initially, when you applied for the building permit, according to the information we have here, it was granted, right?
Correct. Twenty nineteen, it was granted. Twenty twenty, it was revoked, then reapplied because I proved them wrong. Because they said I didn't pay them something. And then, now it's, apparently there was other paperwork that was missing.
Okay. Has anyb... Did anybody come out and inspect the site?
All three building inspectors have been out.
Yeah, really, okay.
Yep. From twenty nineteen to now. It's got the electrical code inspections done, everything's done.
Okay, and not to hog the interview here, but was the... Is the building, as you pull in your driveway, the building is on the right-hand side?
Correct.
And your house is on the left?
Correct.
Right. I pulled in, but I didn't go any farther, because you had dogs there, and I have a dog in my car, so I didn't want to have, you know, pandemonium going on. So the garage itself now is up, am I correct?
Yeah, that garage has been up for almost two years now.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any questions to the applicant?
So was the garage completed before they came back and said that it was no good, or what?
The foundation was completed in twenty nineteen. Then the structure on the foundation was put up in twenty twenty. And when I went to go finish all my paperwork, then I was told, "Oh, you don't, you didn't fill out any of this stuff, you still owe this." And I was like, "Oh, cool." So... I've had a building permit the entire time.
So you were going for the occupancy permit for the building?
I'm sorry?
Were you going for the occupancy permit for the building to close it out?
I was just going for closing the permit out. It's just, it's just a garage, so I had filled out whatever paperwork they told me needed to get filled out the last three times I've been in. And every time, it's a different piece of paperwork with a money involved.
So is this, now look, this was at, in April, you got the permit? April, it says for twenty nineteen?
Uh, yeah, that sounds about right.
Okay. And the building was complete by the end of the year?
The concrete foundation was finished in December. And then, then I had to deal with like six or seven months after that, when they got the new building inspector in that was hired from a firm, I believe? Forget his name.
Yeah.
Then me and him worked on it together. He got everything sorted out to where, then I was comfortable with building the rest of the structure, because he approved it all. And then I had it built, he came out. Everything was installed, and he was like, "I don't do the electrical inspections." And I was like, "Okay." So then I had to wait to get an electrical inspection. And from that time to now, it's switched again. And now I'm getting told, then I got told I had to do this. And, yeah.
So you weren't notified until after the building was completely built and ready for electrical inspection? Then you were notified?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, in all honesty, and I know it sounds Mickey Mouse, but anything that sits in front of the house is a violation of zoning. And you need, you need a, an area variance. And I know it may seem silly, because you can drive around and see a whole bunch of places like that. But they either were built before zoning, or they were, they received the approval of a variance. In all honesty, I'm surprised that initially that they gave you a building permit without a variance. Because it's very obvious that the house, that, I'm sorry, the garage does sit in front of the house. Okay.
Yeah, but doesn't he, you have to identify the location when he gave the permit, right?
Yep.
So if that was done, they would have known where it was going to be built, and someone should have made a note at that time that you can't proceed until you get a variance.
The original garage structure was supposed to be above the driveway. And then, when the original building inspector came out to look at where I was putting it, he suggested putting it where I did. And then, so I redrew everything, resubmitted. And then, I was also told at that time I needed to get a variance from my neighbor, because it was so close to the property line. So I have that as well.
Oh, it's too, the property line is too close to the property line, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a...
We got the letter of consent in here.
Yeah. That'll be from the Lubbies, four, five, six, I believe? Creek Road?
It doesn't look like they had any other place to mount, put it up there. I guess there's a...
It's all rock ledge.
There's a rock up there, the rock ledge there.
Yeah.
That parcel is kind of like the poster child for why you need a zoning board.
Yeah. Initially, it should have come before us, way back in nineteen.
Is it thirty-seven feet from the garage to the property line?
If that's what it says, then yes.
Why did they skip that?
Fifteen.
It's fifteen on that side, on one side?
No, no, I said fifteen usually is a setback.
Of course I didn't bring my book. What do you, what do you want? Well, we can't do it tonight anyway.
What then?
If it's thirty-seven, he has thirty-seven feet. If it's fifty, it's fine. If it's not...
Fifty, I thought it was fifty.
Oh, it shouldn't be. So then he would need a variance for that. So why wouldn't that be caught? At the same time, you know? Four people have to come back and forth.
The notice of denial doesn't state the setback being an issue. But it probably should have been, right?
That's what I'm saying.
But you said you already have a variance for that.
Yes.
Oh.
No, you said he got a variance from his neighbor. No.
A letter from...
Oh, I'm sorry. Variance for that.
So, so basically, we're talking two things here then? We're talking about the setback and the front location?
The application's for the front location. Let's just stick there, okay? Anyone have any other questions for the applicant?
Was that little shed on your prop, is that on your property also? The shed next to the...
Yes.
Like a shed next to it?
Yep.
I mean, even the shed, I hate to say it, but that's in front of the property, in front of the main structure also, so... And that's existing, but, yeah.
So temporary, is that what you're saying?
It's temporary?
It depends on where the front door is, on how...
Well, the shed is right next to the garage, so I, you know... I just wondered if that was ever addressed, but...
Is it in the index, way in the back?
Yeah, it gives about forty-two different references here. You're looking here, look at them.
I don't have that book.
Yeah, I know. And a few other people don't have the book, and...
I have a book.
Okay. What book do you have? Little panel, no?
No. I don't know, because I only have a copy, pages.
The two last, the two people who have resigned last year, one thought it'd be a good idea to recycle it, and I said, "That's $400." And the other guy can't find it. It's like, really? Honest to God? Now, do you... Just hang on one minute. There should be a chart.
Trying to find that chart. Which one, the setbacks?
Yeah.
It was in the, in the back, way in the, like, the last part of the code. Maybe they don't have it.
If you...
Yeah, they do.
If you go to... There should be a chart, hello?
No. Well, that's what we want, both.
But there isn't naturally.
There you go.
And it's... Do you want to look at this?
All right. Where are we hiding here? O D R. O D R.
Oh, you both have it up there. We can share this. Your front yard is sixty, side yard is twenty. That's probably just fifty. Oh, it's twenty, so he's good. All right. We feel better, we found it, the answer, you're good.
Well, you found it, okay.
It's twenty feet.
It is twenty? Okay, oh, O D R, okay. Okay. No other questions? Okay. Where is the applicant? Cody Nelson has submitted proof in support of his application for garage, for a garage between the house and the road, which, under the Code of the Towne Pleasant Valley, requires the issuance of a variance. And the... The variance is based on five factors. Substantiality of the, the variance in relation to the requirement. And how deep is that garage, sir?
It's twenty-two by twenty-five, so it's twenty-five feet deep.
It's about twenty-five feet, then? Oh, twenty, twenty-two deep, okay.
No, twenty-five, if you're driving into it, it's twenty-five feet.
Okay.
And twenty-two feet wide.
The potential effect of increased density on available municipal, county, and state facilities and services, there are none. And whether the variance will cause a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, it will not. And whether the difficulty can feasibly be mitigated by some other method, no. Geography. And whether the interest of justice will be served in granting the variance. And whereas the board should grant the minimum relief necessary to allow reasonable use of the land. Therefore be it resolved that the board finds that the following special circumstances or conditions exist, which apply to the applicant's building, and do not apply generally to the buildings in the neighborhood. First of all, it's already built. Secondly, the topography does not allow for it to be moved.
It was also built on top of existing blacktop, too. That driveway used to loop all the way around to about halfway in between where that garage is sitting right now.
Okay. And anybody come up with any additional reasons? Okay, and be it further resolved that the board finds that the above circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of chapter ninety-eight of the Code of the Towne Pleasant Valley results in practical difficulty and would deprive the applicant the reasonable use of his land and building. And be it further resolved that, for the reasons set forth above, the board determines that the granting of the variance is necessary for the reasonable use of the applicant's land and building, and that the variance as granted is the minimum variance that will accomplish the proposed use. And be it further resolved that the board finds that the above circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of chapter ninety-eight of the Code of the Towne Pleasant Valley results in practical difficulty and would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of his land and building. And be it further resolved, the board determines that the granting of the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning chapter of the Code of the Towne Pleasant Valley, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Would we like any discussion here? I make that in a form of a motion. The secretary, please call the roll.
Stephen Kish?
Okay, I'm good.
Kathleen Meyer?
Okay, good.
Chairman Dunn?
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Five.
Five, five. Five. Go get them. Good, I tell ya. And I'm sorry that you had to go through all of that.
Hopefully, we're done changing everybody in there.
You've been to the board, the board, pretty much. Oh, I'm sorry. There you go, young lady.
Do I answer to you guys, or...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're up to variance number 1062, application number 1062. We're in the applicant's son, Common Mitch Warman, and I believe Michael Kozak, am I right? Okay. Dumb luck, every once in a while, it works out. Has submitted proof in his or their application for solar panels between the house and the road, under the Code of the Towne Pleasant Valley, requires the issuance of a variance. Whoever is going to speak to this application, would they like to speak to it? Give us an information? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go right ahead.
All right, hi, my name is Mitch, and I'm here to just talk about Michael Kozak.
Name is what?
Mitch. Mitch Warman. I'm here to talk about Michael Kozak's Grand Mountain Solar Array. We are hoping to be able to place it in the front yard, because we send some solar sites, solar evaluators out to study the placement of the array and the way the sun, you know, raises and sets. And based off of the studies that we found, this would be the, like, most beneficial position for the array. And we did notice that it is in the front yard, which you guys do not approve of. So we were hoping that we could work with you to be able to place this in the front yard, so Mr. Kozak would get the most bang for his buck, pretty much. And luckily, he is on just over twenty-two acres, so meeting the setback requirements for the property lines was quite easy to accomplish here. So, yeah, I'm open to any questions, and I'm just hoping that...
Somewhere in the back of my pea-sized brain, is it something like forty-six panels? How, how many panels are we talking about?
So all the, all the panels altogether, there is going to be ninety, but it's split between two meters. Because one's going to be going to his barn, and the other one's going to be, it's going to his house. So one of the systems is going to be forty-six panels, and that's going to produce nineteen point one four kilowatts. And then the other panel is going to be forty-six panels, and that is going to accumulate twenty point zero one kilowatts for Mr. Kozak.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
See, look, to me, you're a long way from the road, so there's, it's not really going to be visible to anyone except you. So I have no question.
Are you, are you using a battery storage system for this?
We...
No?
No, we are not.
So it's just straight take it from the day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If I show you this picture from Parcel Access, could you just show me exactly where they will be on this?
Yeah. I'm just going to use...
So... There's... Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out, I'm here. Oh, so it's, all right, that's where I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So were the adjacent properties notified about this?
Yes, they were.
I didn't see, was there any letter or any agreement that was published by anybody, or...
Yes, I submitted everything to Courtney. We had the certified letters stamped, and I hand dropped those off. And then we also did a publication in the New, another Southern, or... Thank you.
Have you been here?
I did have a conversation with Sal. Quatro's is our neighboring property, and we spoke by phone. I'm like, because I...
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, see, everything you say has to be under oath. Everything in the record has to be under oath.
Yes, well, yeah, when we swear you in that way, we're, we're cool. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I, I do, I'm happy, happy to be in this position. So I'm the property owner, live there with my family, my wife and two daughters. And our neighbor on one side is Quatro's. They have their chicken farm there. And the other side is a large property owned by a gentleman named Michael Kong, who I know well. I haven't heard anything from him objecting otherwise. But Sal, from Quatro's, did call me after he got the letter. I don't, sort of hearsay, so I don't want to speak for him, but I'll tell you, during our conversation, you know, he, he expressed to me that, you know, he didn't see any basis for objecting to it. The property is, you see from the map, set back pretty far from the road. It's a, you know, flagship shape. Most people don't even know we're back there.
Yeah, right.
And we're surrounded by trees on all sides. So I, I would have a hard time imagining that anybody could, could see it, unless you were like on the Quatro's side, really, you know, straining to look through those trees, so...
Is there, John, is there an expectation we're supposed to have a letter on file from the adjacent property owner?
Okay. I don't think there's an expectation. I mean, would it be beneficial, yes. But the fact that he did get notification of it, if he, if he had problems, I would think that he would make an appointment to come in.
Okay, yeah.
I must also, and I apologize for this, folks, along with the application, we have the certified, a list of certified mail that went out to neighbors. And we have the affidavit of publication from the Southern and Northern Dutchess News. Okay, sorry about that. Any other questions?
Are these going to follow the sun? They're just going to...
They just, they would. They steered away from the ones that picked it, because there's too many mechanical...
Issues.
Issues with it, and they break, and you have to send thousands to go out and fix it again for the little bit that it turns. It's not that much more beneficial.
The nice thing about the location is we're pretty far away from the property line. And we didn't want to touch the trees. And so it's far enough away, and they're pitched at an angle where we don't have to remove any trees. So it's clear, because we get sun running straight across the sky, and full, basically, full day of sunlight on those panels every day. Yeah, it'll work out really well.
We don't, I don't have a, a full day on my panels.
Yeah, it, it just happened to work out really well for us.
Does that dump back into the power grid that centralizes them?
Sorry, I keep turning around, I'm still new to solar. I'm still catching up.
I was wondering.
Yeah, as I understand it, it's, you know, we get some kind of credit back from central housing.
Getting that metering.
Yeah, exactly.
You're still going to be hooked up to the grid, though, right?
Yes. No, we, we can't...
Because you want to be backup.
Yeah, we can't go like fully disconnected unless, unless we have batteries. The batteries right now are just outrageously expensive.
I know. I'm just worried.
It's unbelievable, yeah, so... But we should be okay without them.
You like your electric bill a lot better.
I mean, the goal is to be, you know, free of fossil fuels, to be frank. You know, we have the capability to do that with this, to go everything all-electric, and then have everything powered from the solar panels, and also have sufficient power to, to power our, you know, charge our EVs, you know, if we get them in the future, so...
It's going to give you enough, huh?
Hopefully.
Well, twenty kVA should be enough to support the house and nineteen for the barn. That's probably overload for the barn.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. All right. Whereas proof has been duly considered by the board at a public hearing, and whereas the area variance is a request for relief from dimensional standards contained in zoning ordinance, and it requires a demonstration of practical difficulty, and whereas relief may be granted if the applicant can demonstrate the strict compliance, that strict compliance with the zoning chapter would cause practical difficulty, and whereas the determination of practical difficulty is a three-step process in which the applicant must demonstrate that the application of the zoning ordinance, a strict application of the zoning ordinance to his property causes significant economic injury. Uh, secondly, the applicant must demonstrate the economic industry, injury must be shown that the regulation, it must be shown that the regulation in question is reasonable related to the legitimate exercise of police power, and assuming that the regulation in question is reasonably related to the legitimate exercise of the police power, the applicant must demonstrate that the restrictions, as strictly applied in, in his case, are unrelated to the public health, safety, or welfare of the community, and that the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the community, and whereas in making a determination of the practical difficulty, the board may consider one, how substantial a variation is in relation to the requirement, and it is quite substantial when you look at the number of, uh, panels, uh, as well as the...
It's a hundred percent variance, so it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, right. Yeah, uh, one, one panel would be. And that the potential effect of the increased density on available municipal county and state facilities and services, there is none. Uh, whether the variance will cause a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, and it will not. And whether the difficulty can feasibly be mitigated by some other method. Uh, I don't know where else you would put the panels. And whether the interest of justice will be served in granting the variance, and whereas the board should grant the minimum relief necessary to allow reasonable use of the land, and therefore be it resolved that the board finds that the following special circumstances or conditions exist where, which apply to the applicant's land, eh, but which do not apply generally to the land in the neighborhood. Uh, first of all, it will, it will not be visible from the road. It will have no effect on the neighborhood, and it will have no effect on natural resources. And be it further resolved, the board finds that the above circumstances or conditions are such that strict application of the provisions of chapter ninety-eight of the Code of the Towne Plus Valley results in practical difficulty and would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of his land, and be it further resolved that for the reasons set forth above, the board determines that the granting of the variance is necessary for the reasonable use of the applicant's land, and that the variance is granted, as granted, is the minimum variance that will accomplish the proposed use. And be it further resolved that the board finds that the above circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of chapter ninety-eight of the Code of the Towne Plus Valley results in practical difficulty and would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of his land and buildings. And be it further resolved that the board determines that the granting of the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning chapter of the Code of the Towne Plus Valley, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. And do we have any discussion on that? And would the secretary can to call the roll?
Uh, Board Member Stephen Kish.
I agree.
Board Member Kathleen Myers.
Yes.
Chairman Don Dunn.
Yes.
Board Member Betty Bamba.
Yes.
And Board Member Mary Poppins.
Yes.
There you go. Go get your panels.
Uh, Mr. Dunn, can I, can I say something briefly?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to thank you all, uh, for your service on the board. Uh, you're doing a great service to the town. And really want to compliment you all for your careful consideration of the application. I think it's a good thing for the town as a whole, to be frank. Uh, and I had a really nice time. I had several members of the board come and visit the property, and you know, I enjoyed that experience, so, thank you all, and, uh, happy holidays.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too. Have a great holiday. And there you go, young lady.
Didn't anyone say they enjoyed the experience?
Well, hey. That's why when they complain, when people complain in town, they're gonna...
Yeah, ready?
Sorry? I guess I could.
Well, no, we, I have one more thing.
I was just gonna...
The schedule that you sent out looks great today. Are, we have to vote on it or anything?
No.
No, just, so is everybody in favor?
No, we just normally do it, you know...
You missed all the important holidays.
Missed the fair, missed Thanksgiving, and missed Christmas.
Right.
That's the idea.
Did you get it printed out for me?
Okay.
Do you wanna close the meeting before I comment on the poor filling out of these applications again?
Yeah, okay, uh, move to adjourn?
All in favor?
I, I second that.
Yeah. Okay.